Okay. I think we're about to start. So... Noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Members of the public who wish to watch this meeting online may do so on ACTON TV's YouTube channel, found at the top of our agenda. This meeting, as always, is being recorded and will be posted to ACTON TV's website, at actontv.org. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I would first like to extend congratulations to both Ben Blumenthal and Andrew Shortz on their successful reelection to school committee. Congratulations, gentlemen. And I would also like to thank the voters of Acton for coming out in very, very large numbers on Tuesday and showing support for our override, although very narrow margins. And I think we'll talk a little bit more about that, but we'll also talk a little bit about the budget. But there is no longer an A or a B budget, folks. We just have "the" budget. So, thank you to the voters of Acton for that support, and we've still got a lot of work to go. I think what I would like to do at this time is just, while we've got lots of people in the room, remind everybody about the remaining steps in the process. So, Tuesday was a ballot vote to approve in Acton an increase to their levy limit. Since that has passed, we still need to now go and have our budget and the towns' budgets approved at town meeting. So, there are still two more meetings for us to have an approved budget for next year. Next Monday, May 6th, here at Acton-Boxborough Regional High School, in the auditorium, cafeteria, gymnasium, lots of space, lots of clickers will be available, but please come. Registration starts at 6:00 PM. You do need to be at town meeting in person to vote on all of the articles at town meeting, including the school budget. They're anticipating a fairly large turnout, so please come with ample time for check-in. And you do have to get a clicker and check-in. The parking will be available on all on campus, and then there also is going to be parking at the Boardwalk campus, and there will be shuttle buses provided to bring people from Boardwalk over to town meeting. So, lots of planning going on to make sure that there's both adequate space and equipment for voting. Families with small kids, there is babysitting available, and flyers have gone out about that, so that there's some childcare available for kids, so that parents can come and participate in all that is annual town meeting. Following the Acton annual town meeting, the following week, May 13th, Boxborough is having their town meeting. Should we have a successful vote on our budget at the Acton Town Meeting, we then need to move on to a successful vote of our budget at the Boxborough Town Meeting on May 13th. Again, ample parking. There is already a plan for overflow space there. Boxborough doesn't use clickers. We use nifty neon-colored cards, so there are plenty of those available. There are plans have been made, like I said, for some overflow space in the library at Boxborough, sorry, at Lanchard, and there's going to be the ability to remotely hear and see what's going on, but if you're at Boxborough Town Meeting and you're in the overflow space, you do need to walk down the hall to be able to make a comment. And our budget comes up in Boxborough Town Meeting as part of the overall budget votes that occur at Boxborough Town Meeting. So, we do need to have lots of people in attendance at both of those town meetings. Again, you can't be remote. You have to be in person. You have to register. You have to show up early to get in the room. No one will be turned away. You can come at any time, but please do come and vote, not just for our budgets and your town budgets, but all of the other important items that are being presented on the warrants at the annual town meetings. So, again, thank you to all the voters who came out in the town of Acton on Tuesday and beforehand in submitting their ballots. Congratulations to our newly re-elected school committee members. We're not done yet. We still have about two and a half more weeks of work before we have an approved budget for next year. With that, I will welcome our ABRHS School Committee reps up to the microphone to share some updates from the high school. Who do we have this evening? Three whole people. Nice. Make sure that microphone is on. Yep.
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Julia Zhao. I'm a sophomore at the high school, and this month I'd like to share a quick message from the high schoolers, just saying that we really appreciate you guys, school committee members, reaching out to us for our opinion on issues particularly concerning the high school. There's some members that have been really great about that, so we are very happy that we get to kind of have a say in how our school is run and stuff like that. And on the same note, a lot of elections are happening in the clubs and other extracurriculars around the high school, so in general, it's been great, and the students have really appreciated getting to have leadership and getting to have a voice in their own communities. So, we'd love to be able to keep that up at school and with you guys, and we would love it if you guys would reach out to us more, because we'd love to stay in contact. Thank you.
Thanks, Julia. I'm Molly.
I'm Molly. I'm a junior. I know I've talked about this before, but the problem with the freshman boys in West Commons has not really improved. We've had different teachers standing in that area, but oftentimes, they kind of just ignore the boys. The issue I have with it is that the math classrooms in the lower portion of West, which are very close to West Commons, often have to have the doors open because they have poor air circulation, and it's really hard to have those doors open and focus in math class when you have these boys being extremely loud in a space that isn't that far away from you. And then also, the issue with them leaving trash around has improved a little bit, but at the same time, it's still a big issue, and it's really annoying when you have to clean up a bunch of freshman boys' trash for them. So, thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Hi, Dixia.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dixia. I'm a sophomore, and I just want to talk a bit about the override that has been approved to be on the ballot. So, in general, after talking to several students, there has been a positive kind of vibe about it. A lot of students are still confused about it, however, so I feel like providing resources on kind of how the fiscal year runs throughout the school in a way that's accessible to students would be really beneficial. Furthermore, it's AP season, so kind of just being able to promote good mental health practices and studying practices and just hoping everybody does well on tests. Also, I was talking to a student recently. She mentioned that PE credits should be optional for those who take sports during the year, something that could help students with their schedules and may even provide some relief in terms of funding. So, just an idea that some of the students wanted to pop out to school committee. So, that's it for my update. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dixia. Please.
Thanks to the student reps. I just wanted to remind you guys that any 18-year-old registered voter for either the town, for the town of Acton, can attend town meeting on Monday night and can vote in favor of the override, and it would also be awesome for any of those, I know you guys are super busy right now with finals and end-of-year stuff, but to give your perspective to town meeting members, I think you will be permitted to do that whether or not you are 18 and a registered voter. It's so important that people understand what's at stake, and you guys are really, I know that you guys are on your way out, but you could speak for the younger kids who are coming behind you. And same is true for any, you know, Boxborough residents who are students who can attend the Boxborough Town Meeting on the 13th. So, if you guys could just let, you know, any channels of communication you have to let folks know that in your school, that would be awesome. Thank you for being here, as always.
Thanks, Jenny. All right. Up next is public participation. So, per our committee policy, BEDH, members of the public are invited to speak for up to three minutes. I do want to give everybody a heads-up on our agenda. Because we don't have a B budget, we're not going to have a public comment section later on in the evening about the budget topics, so this will be the only time to make a public comment. As a reminder, speakers must be recognized by the chair. We typically limit this to three minutes, and the committee does not typically respond. Mr. Ballesku.
Is this on? Oh, it's already on, that's why. Hi, Mike Ballesku. I'm the president of the Acton-Boxborough Education Association, also an Acton resident and a Miriam parent. I feel like I haven't been up here in a while to talk to you all. I've been busy. But I wanted to speak on behalf of teachers and share with you all that almost every teacher I've talked to in the last 48 hours had the same complicated reaction that I did to the results Tuesday, which is overwhelming relief, that the most difficult hurdle for this process to fund our schools was cleared, and, you know, it was close, but a win's a win. On the other hand, I think, I speak for a lot of teachers by saying, I also felt incredible disappointment that, you know, after two straight years of budget cuts, facing a third straight year of cuts, that asking the community even for just adequate resources was basically a coin flip. We weren't talking in this override about bold transformational resources, but just adequate resources to keep us afloat came down to 37 votes. That's the most recent tally, by the way. And so, I think for me personally, what I take away from that is that I have learned, what a lot of folks have learned around this country, which is that we cannot take for granted anymore that the public is going to overwhelmingly support public education, that if we want resources for public education, if we want to support teachers and students, we have to fight for those resources. We have to fight hard, that we cannot assume that when the school is in need, that the public is going to rally, because we were danger-close Tuesday night to seeing really, really significant damaging, really significant resources slip away and real damage done. So, knowing now that we have to fight hard, I want to ask you all on this committee and everyone behind me and everyone watching at home, what are you going to do between now, right now, and Monday, May 6th, to get people to town meeting to vote for the school budget? What are you willing to do? People are going to have to be uncomfortable. They're going to have to spend hours parking and waiting in lines and sitting at a chair. They're going to have to skip practices. They're going to have to find babysitters. They're going to have to disrupt their lives Monday night. I think that fight is worth it. I think it is really, really important, but we all need to contribute to that fight. So, everyone watching at home, everyone here in this room, ask yourselves, what are you going to do between now and Monday night? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lindsay Toskis, and I am one of the STEAM coaches in the district. I work at the Boardwalk Schools, Gates St. Douglas, and I'm going to read my statement for you tonight. I am here tonight to urge the residents of Acton and Boxborough to vote yes on the override at the upcoming town meetings on May 6th and May 13th. This vote ensures our district continues providing quality education with necessary resources and instructional supports. As a science educator, I am concerned about the impact of budget cuts on STEAM education. Last year's cuts eliminated the K-8 Science Curriculum Coordinator position. Now, if the override doesn't pass, over 85 positions, including all three STEAM coaches, will be eliminated. We are women in STEAM advocating for these crucial programs, serving as role models for children and supporting all teachers K-6. The district's website states, "All students participate in STEAM learning experiences to construct authentic, ethical, and creative solutions to real-world problems. By developing the STEAM habits of mind, students build their capacity to communicate and take action to address challenges. Educators are supported to be effective STEAM educators and see the value of STEAM education." So, I'm wondering, without STEAM coaches and a science coordinator, how can we truly deliver on the promise of STEAM education? Who will advocate for science during the school day when there are so many other demands on classroom teachers? Who will bring STEAM into the STEAM labs and STEAM into the classrooms? Who will support cross-curricular STEAM activities that deepen student learning? STEAM education is a crucial part of the student learning experience. It is hands-on, authentic, experiential, and it is the type of learning that so many of our students need and deserve. Acton-Boxborough was recently ranked number 10 for top high schools in Massachusetts and number 20 nationally for STEM schools. However, these rankings and our commitment to STEAM education are at risk without proper funding and staffing. We must prepare our students for the future, deepen their understanding of the world, and foster their critical thinking skills. Cutting STEAM resources undermine these goals, so please, everyone who is available to vote on Monday, please show up and vote yes for the override to protect our district's excellence in education, especially in STEAM fields, because our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Gary.
Hi, Adam. Gary Kushner, Boxborough Finance Committee. First of all, I want to follow up what Adam said. Town meeting for Boxborough is May 13th. Please, all of you, come, especially Boxborough. In the past few years, we haven't had all the Boxborough School Committee members there, so it'd be nice to have everybody show up. As you know, I've been talking all year long about the fact I can't talk during the meeting. Tonight, you're going to talk about the long-range financial plans. I couldn't open the presentation. My system wouldn't let me. So, I don't know what's going to be presented, so I have to ask questions now. So, is the long-range plan conservative? Is the long-range plan not conservative? What's the five-year growth? What's the 10-year growth? So, these are all, that's the long agenda, I'm told, from what I saw on May 2nd's agenda.
The long-term funds policy?
Yes.
It's a second read of a policy that we've read once already.
And I haven't seen it the first time, so I must have missed the meeting then that it was discussed. So, again, I don't know what's in it. So, again, I can't answer those, ask those questions later, so I'm pretending I know what's going to be presented, and I don't know. So, hopefully, my question's going to be answered, that we're going to see some real numbers and understand how we're handling the long-term finances. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Hello. I am Rohan. I'm a ninth grader at ABRHS.
Hello. My name is Leonard, and I'm a freshman at Acton-Boxborough Regional High School. We are from a student-led environmental team called Resource Force, fighting against climate change. We are attempting to make Acton-Boxborough into becoming a more eco-friendly school district and decarbonize the AB school district.
We plan on decarbonizing the school district with our climate resolution. It's, the climate resolution just promises that you'll take fundamental steps in trying to improve the school district's eco-friendly capabilities, and many students have expressed that they are interested in supporting this climate resolution.
At ABRHS, we are currently spreading information to environmental science classes, explaining who we are and what we are doing. We have also hosted a flex block earlier this school year, and students have drafted, and some have sent their letters to the school committee voicing their opinions on our resolution.
Our resolution, keep in mind, is not a financial investment, and immediate action is not required. The climate resolution is just a commitment that says that you will ensure that you will take steps in order to become more eco-friendly and make the ABRHS district more sustainable for the future, and that you will set an example for other school districts on creating a more sustainable future for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. While I'm not going to ask you to stay till the end, we are going to have an update later on this evening about the battery array and solar project at our Boardwalk campus, which might be interesting. Please don't stay that late to hear about it. Watch the video later and speak with the Resource Force as a whole about what you're going to learn later on about that. Thank you for coming. Hi, Amanda.
Hi. Amanda Bailey, 50, Washington Drive, Acton, speaking, my capacity as a citizen and a volunteer with Together for Acton. And I just want to say that you've missed out, many of you, on a really beautiful campaign. We've seen toddlers, we've seen elementary school kids, we've seen one reluctant junior high school student. We've seen high schoolers out there holding signs, running from campus to the polls during breaks and skipping lunch to hold signs outside the polls. We've had teachers going door-to-door. We had a citizen say that was the saddest thing that she's seen, that she had teachers from our district coming to her door begging and asking for support. And the question that we got from staff was, where is the school committee? Where are our school committee members? Why aren't they out here with us? Why aren't they more visible? And I know that some of you are taking actions. I'm going to echo Mike. Please, we need you between now and Monday and between now and the 13th to be visible and out there in the community, supporting all of us, please. We know that you're working hard, but we need more of you, please. Even one more thing would help. Please visit togetherforacton.org to learn more about the budget that we have to pass on Monday at Acton Town Meeting. Make an effort to show up, folks, please, out there listening. Thank you all for what you're doing. Please, please, everyone, come support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Hello again.
Hi, I'm back. Hi. So, yeah, I'm back, this time as a public participant. Again, my name's Julia Zhao. I live in Boxborough, so it sounds a little bit like a broken record, but again, I'd like to read my testimony that I already gave to Together for Acton, but I would like to encourage everyone, especially people like me that live in Boxborough, to come and vote on the town meeting on the 13th. I'm too young to vote, but I'll try to be there. So, "As students in the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District, we take great pride in both our academic and our extracurricular achievements. It is unrealistic and unfair to expect us to continue performing at this high standard should the override fail to pass. I think it's fair to say that almost all high schoolers experience a significant amount of stress as a result of a multitude of reasons. Taking away our opportunities to relax, discuss our struggles, and form trusting connections with the adults at school is dangerous at best and life-threatening at worst amidst the mental health crisis affecting young people throughout our nation. I'm certain that the proposed budget without the override will negatively impact student experiences of all grade levels in Acton and Boxborough. We must continue to support students through arguably the most important years of their physical, mental, and emotional development, and this begins by voting yes to the override. Thank you."
Thank you, Julian. Hello again, Dixia. Welcome back.
Hi, folks. I'm Dixia again. I would like to give my testimony as a student, especially for Acton residents out there watching this right now. So, basically, my family moved to this town solely for the highly-rated schools, and this school system has provided me with countless educational opportunities, and to see extracurriculars, including sports and competing clubs such as Science Olympiad or Speech and Debate, to lose that funding, to lose that support, is highly detrimental to student success. Furthermore, it's devastating that we're forced to cut access to mental health care programs and teachers to be able to fit the budget. And even during peak allergy season this year, right now, we have a tissue shortage. It's incredibly frustrating to see how these budget issues affect the entire district. And so, to ensure student success and well-being, I urge everybody watching this, residents in Acton and Boxborough, to vote yes for the override. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello again, Molly.
I wasn't planning on saying anything, but now I feel left out, so. I also moved to this district. My parents decided to move here for the schools. I was in Woburn before this, and as a child who had severe anxiety and issues relating to bullying, I found that Woburn was not a good place for me to be. It was a really hard school district for me to be in because teachers, principals, admin just did not support the students in the ways that they should have been, especially students like me who needed extra support. And it was a shock in a good way when I came to Acton, and all of my needs were met by important mental health resources, mental health counselors, just like everything Acton has done for me, I'm so grateful, because I am so much more successful than I ever would have been in Woburn because of the resources I've been given. And I think, just for everybody who can vote, it's very important to vote for the override, because, like, just for people like me, for every student, it's really important that we have those resources, because so many districts don't have those resources, and I think one of the things I'm so grateful that I live in Acton for is because we have those resources, and I think it's like something that stands out from other towns, and I think that's something we should try, continue to have, because it's something that is good to stand out for, so.
Thank you, Molly. All right. I want to just make one clarification for those folks watching at home. The override has passed, but the budget hasn't. So, step one was an override, and now we need to pass our budget, and we only have one budget now, thankfully. So, everyone who's coming to vote in favor of something, look for the budget, not the override. Vote yes on the school budget. With that, Peter. Please, please, please.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the students. I think it's exactly those kinds of things that our town meetings need to hear. We've been accused of reckless spending. We've been accused of having extra everything. We've been accused of having all kinds of extras that are not core needs for our students. These are your teachers. These are your schools, and I hope that a lot of you will consider coming to speak for those that are, those kids who are coming behind you, who will lose out on all of these things, and you too, to the, you as well, to the extent that you are still, you know, have some time ahead of you at AB. These are the things that the voters need to hear, because, you know, this is, this is what, this is where the rubber meets the road, and again, these are your teachers working hard. These are your, you know, staff, principal, everybody who's given you all these opportunities, and they're not going to be able to continue to do it if this budget doesn't pass. So, I know it's hard and daunting, and it's not for everybody, and if, and if you're too young to speak or vote, offer to babysit for a neighbor or help in some way so that we can get our community out there on the 6th and on the 13th to vote for our budget. Thank you so much for your work.
Make sure you encourage any eligible voter in your household or neighborhood to come out. Thank you. All right. Peter, superintendent's update.
First, thank you to all the students. Fantastic to hear your voices in this, and I think that's incredibly important. You know, I'll just start off by, you know, giving you a quick update on town meeting. We are expecting a very, very large turnout in both town meetings due to the budget. In terms of working, you know, first with Acton, we have been working with the town manager's office to make sure that we have enough space available, so we've opened up multiple other spaces in the high school to be able to accommodate the number of residents who we anticipate attending. We also have worked with the town to develop a parking plan and overflow parking at a number of different sites around town. They're going to be setting kind of a priority order to what that looks like, but we'll also be providing shuttle service from those satellite parking locations over to the school. In terms of Boxborough, we did similar space planning with them, and as we get closer, we'll continue to evaluate what other needs that they have and try and support that the best we can. I certainly want to thank, you know, Mark Hamill and Brendan Hearn, who have done all of the work behind the scenes to make sure that we are well-prepared to support the two towns in the town meetings. So, thank you to, thank you to them for their work. You know, I just want to give my own thanks to, you know, citizens in Acton and Boxborough, or Acton, excuse me, citizens in Acton, you know, for passing the override. It was a very, very slim margin, and as Mike said, I think, you know, it's clearly a sign of the times. I know there's a lot of districts struggling with financial circumstances right now. I would say it's, it was a relief that it passed. I think it was more of a feeling of having averted disaster as opposed to having won something. of a feeling of having averted disaster as opposed to having won something, you know, quite honestly, and on a, on a personal level. You know, I remember, you know, we're $3 million away from fully funding what we wanted to do next year and what we're currently doing now. And so, I think it's just really important to recognize that it was a close vote. And I think we need to make sure that we're reminding people that, no, this is, doesn't fully fund the schools. This is $3 million less than fully funding the schools is what we're moving forward with. And so, you know, I think, you know, certainly, having talked to a lot of our leaders, you know, I think I've heard that similar sentiment to what Mike shared, that there was more relief than elation, you know. But certainly, very, very appreciative because it's a lot better to be on this side of that 33 margin or 37 margin than the alternative. So, you know, we're moving forward. We're excited about that. I have had a number of either school committee members and/or staff who have asked questions through principals around what is the process for the budget adoption and what happens in the event that it doesn't pass one over the other town. I did send you the DESI advice about that. I'm happy to answer questions. I'm not going to present on it tonight. Principals also have it in case staff have questions about that. It's fairly long and lengthy in DESI speak, but, you know, at least we know what that process looks like so that we can speak to that if we are asked at the town meetings. I will also follow up and post that on the school committee website as a document used, just so there's a reference for it that, that the public can get to. You know, I, next item, I'll transition away from any budget discussion. Tuesday, June 18th is the last day of school, so we have officially set that. We can set it coming out of April vacation. So, that's an early release day. Breakfast and lunch are available for students, and we'll be sending out more information on specific start times and end times to families. We had an awesome, awesome, awesome event at Leary Field last week. It was the Unified Games. And what an incredible opportunity for our student athletes to come out and show what they could do and compete in just a fantastic environment. A lot of our unified sports, if you're unaware of that, it was kind of a follow-up to what Special Olympics originally were thought of as, but more of, the idea of Unified Games is more to have maybe some students who have disabilities also compete alongside typically developing peers. And so, you know, just being able to recognize that student athletes, you know, are, you know, span the entire population of the students we serve. And I think it was great to be able to recognize them. I want to thank, you know, the Acton and Boxborough Police and Fire Departments because they showed up to do an absolutely great welcome ceremony. And thank you to all the staff who were involved in supporting that because it is absolutely, hands down, one of the best days of the year. We also had a really successful walk over the weekend for the Out of Darkness Walk. So, for those of you, I know at least some of you were there to support that. You know, thank you for doing that. That is a walk to support suicide prevention awareness and to make sure that that stays at the top of people's minds in this community. We also had a high school senior art show last week. This is the time of year where there's a lot going on. I would urge you to check out different school websites. You can see some of the more public-facing events, and you're obviously welcome to attend those. We had, I've previously spoken about two of our students, Timison and Arnav, who had advanced in the Regeneron International Science Competition. They're actually now headed to the national level of that. So, congratulations to those two high school students. We are also running a competition for the 2024 Terrific Tray of the Year. So, we'd like to get our community involved in supporting our food service program and voting them up in the standings. And then, we're sending out some information on the next Cartwheel webinar, which I believe is our last webinar of the year, and that is Talking to Youth About Mental Health and Suicide Prevention. So, please be on the lookout for that. We'll be sending it out tomorrow.
Thank you, Peter. Will the website for the Terrific Tray contest be posted in the Superintendent's Update? Awesome. It's on the food service page. Vote early, vote often for the Acton-Boxborough Terrific Tray. Great. All right. Any questions or comments for Peter? Tori?
It's great to hear about the, the parking and the shuttle plan. Do we have a sense of, like, the timeline on those shuttles, knowing that people may be arriving and departing at various times? Will they run throughout, or are they limited to a specific window?
I think that's all going to be posted on the town of Acton's website. I'm not sure of the exact timing of it, so I don't want to misspeak. I'll let them speak for it.
They're starting at 6:00, and they're running every 15 minutes until they feel like people have all gone back to their cars, and there's no cars in the lot.
Any other questions or comments for Peter? All right. We are now on to our guests and presentations. So, I would invite our elementary principals up to the table to give us our elementary school update.
Well, they're coming up. I'll just sing their praises. You know, I was thinking of how I could alliterate while I was, you know, introducing them, but we have an exceptional group of elementary principals. It's about as close as I got. But, no, really, this, this is a relatively new group, as you're going to see some new faces this year from what you've seen on previous updates. But they have just formed an incredible relationship working with each other. They push each other. They support each other. They've done a lot of great work over the course of the year. So, we're just excited to be able to welcome them and let them talk a little bit about some of the goals that they worked on over the course of the year. You know, we did, in preparing for this meeting, we had the possibility that we would have to do a B-budget presentation for this meeting, which could have lasted hours on itself. So, we did give them a limit of 10 minutes. So, you're not going to hear really in-depth about any one thing or any one school. So, what they've done is they've taken some of the work that they've shared across schools, but highlighted what that looks like a little bit at each school for you. So, I will just, you know, apologize to you for why it might appear brief, but it's simply because we knew that we had the possibility of a pretty, pretty challenging agenda.
More time for Q and A, maybe? We'll have to ask the guys in charge of the meeting, if that's possible. And don't forget to turn your mics on. If you want to grab the mic behind you too, Dana, we can have an extra.
Thank you for that introduction, Peter, and thank you to school committee members for having us this evening. We do appreciate the time to talk about the important work that's happening in our schools. Over the next 10 minutes, we will highlight some of our accomplishments in our school improvement plans. But it is important to note that all efforts described tonight are directly connected to our district goals, as we have included in this slide here. So, there are many district goals. There are many school improvement plans. But we decided that tonight, we wanted to talk about the ones in our schools that connect to strengthening relationships, professional learning, responsive to the diversity of our students and families, being responsive to the diversity of our students and families, MTSS, which I know you've heard a lot about before, Multi-Tierred System of Support, and Evidence-Based Screening Instruction and Assessment. So, while that, while I just said we were going to narrow it down to that, and that seems like a really big list, we really are narrowing it down. So, thank you.
So, our hope is to narrow it down to these three areas that, similar to last year, all six elementary schools positioned our school improvement plans around a focus on multi-tiered systems of support, culturally responsive practices, and social-emotional learning. And you can see the acronyms on the slide, too, because sometimes we talk in edge-to-speak, so those are there for you, too.
Can I just ask that, as you start speaking, maybe you can just introduce yourself? Just, again, just to refresh everyone's memory. I think that may be helpful for the committee.
I'm Kristy Nealon. I'm the principal of McCarthy Town. Nice to see you all.
Hi, I'm Dana. I'm the principal of Blanchard Memorial School. So, as been stated already, we're going to talk about a lot of different things that connect back to the same thing. And inevitably, one of the things that are, might come up as a question from you is, how do you possibly know how effective this is and how do you sustain it? So, I'll get into a little bit around that. So, we had a focus of SEL is one of our goals at Blanchard. And I picked this particular highlight to talk about because it kind of goes back to one of the district goals around professional learning. So, what we decided to do with the building this year is, we felt like we needed some more Tier One support around how to support our students' social-emotional learning. And part of that was building the capacity for teachers and educators. So, we brought in Responsive Classroom, I'm sorry, Sort of Practices, same initials, to help support. One of the, the things that we think is most important for the district, which is around building caring, trusting relationships and a sense of belonging. And so, what was helpful in terms of offering this PL was it was available to everybody, but also intersected so well with many of the other things that we're doing at the other buildings around Second Step, Responsive Classroom, and some of the Castle Five frameworks. The outcomes, sustainability, and ultimately, the effectiveness of programs across district and in different buildings are impacted by how we deliver professional learning, both at the district and at the building level. And so, we do know these things to be true about professional learning. It's best when it's provided to all, so it's universal and meaningful. We dedicate the time for it, which the district does do. It's engaging and immediately actionable, and there's ongoing support from the folks that can help deliver that best, whether that's from a program or an institution or from our own education, our own educators, which sometimes is our best professional learning. And then, ongoing coaching and coordination from our teaching and learning department.
I, I don't need two mics, thank you. I am Tricia O'Reilly, and I am the principal of Conan School. Apologies for not introducing myself earlier. I'm really excited to talk about MTSS at Conan, Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And I'm really excited to talk about it because this year, the, the teachers, the coaches, the whole staff at Conan really, really made leaps and bounds progress in implementing, adjusting, and embracing a predictable, efficient MTSS system. I'm, I'm actually really proud of their accomplishments. It was something that, in my previous district, took us probably three years to put together, and we were able to do it in this school year. So, I, I'm very excited to talk about it. One of the things we did was, we actually modified the structure of our data team meetings so that every teacher knew when they left the meeting exactly which student needed what intervention, who was going to provide that intervention. I'm talking about the whole grade, which teacher was going to provide it, where it was going to happen, what small group was going to be together, and what evidence we were going to look for at the end of the six-week period in order to see if there was any progress. That's, that's a big chunk. That's a lot of people being on the same page, and that's a lot of folks actually just believing that they can do something like that, and they did a fabulous job with it. We implemented a K6 Walk to Learn model. That means that during flex time, during four times a week, every child in every grade gets redistributed to a different classroom, or possibly they stay in their same classroom so that they are with the best person to teach them what it is they need to know, or, or what they need to learn, or what they need to review. We were, we began to incorporate SEL, Social Emotional Learning, into our data team meetings. When we met, we started with check-ins, and we're really hoping next year to make that a little bit more formalized. And we also had a great protocol when we started out that we realized was not really a very great protocol at all for us. So, we spent a little time shifting the protocol, and we really ended up with something that we know works. So, we're very excited to actually start next year with something solid like this and improve upon it. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Larry Walpe. I'm the principal of Douglas Elementary School. I get excited just hearing what you're doing, so I want to do more of it. Anyhow, in conjunction with our culturally responsive teacher leaders, which each of our schools has two of them, we did a whole lot of work with culturally responsive practices. And essentially, what that means is, we had a lot of professional learning on culturally responsive teaching practices. So, meeting kids where they're at, getting a sense of their backgrounds, and taking that into account when instructing them, and realizing that we all come from different races, religions, backgrounds, ethnicities, excuse me. And all of those should be valued. And how can we make the instruction culturally relevant to all the students in front of us? So, we did two professional learning sessions on this. And in addition to that, we also had the staff map out with Zaretta Hammond, who my colleague Christina will touch on in just a minute, talks about dependent and independent learners, and sort of that whole spectrum, that whole trajectory from one to another, and getting an opportunity to look at the learners in front of us in our classroom and say, well, where do they lie within the spectrum, and how can we best meet their needs?
I'm Allison Warren, principal of Gates. Very excited to share with you. I'm going to be sharing with you about our SEL work here at Gates this year. We are working on building out our tiered supports and systems with SEL. So, we started the Second Step curriculum this year, which was very exciting, across all the grade levels. We also used a SEL screener, DESI screener, that helped us focus that work. That can also give us information, hopefully, I don't have results yet, but at the end of the year, where we can look to see where are potential areas of growth, and where is also areas that we may want to focus on next year. So, very excited to see what happens with that. And also, the Castle Framework was an area that we looked at with adult SEL along with student SEL. Did some exciting work last summer with McCarthy Town and created a lot of great resources that the staff were able to use, some for morning meetings, but also within our specialist classes with art, music, P, and library. So, thank you very much.
I'm going to just touch on multi-tiered systems of support at McCarthy Town. And I'm actually going to start at the whole district. All of the elementary schools this year, with the leadership of Deb Bukas and her team, implemented a new Tier One English Language Arts Curriculum, which is an enormous lift. And the support that we all gave each other, we had a wonderful implementation team, sort of forging the path and creating a space where the rest of us could learn with them. What this does is create a place where all elementary students across Acton-Boxborough are receiving research-based instruction. I want to also just touch upon at McCarthy Town, our focus of MTSS was the Flex Block. So, Tricia talked a lot about the data meetings, where they decide what the instruction needs to be. At McCarthy Town, we also, this year, really focused on, what do we do after that in that Flex Block period to make sure that teachers are using data to inform the instructions and the interventions, and kids are engaging in meaningful intervention work to grow their individual skills. The last piece is really, at McCarthy Town, we always try to make sure we have no story without data and no data without a story. So, we're looking at spreadsheets, and we're looking at quantitative data, but we're also thinking about the whole child and connecting our culturally responsive practices, our SEL, and the MTSS work. One of the ways we would measure that work is to look at our I-Ready results, our MCAS results, our classroom assessment data. And I just want to really give a shout out to Deb Bukas and the curriculum team, and all of my principal colleagues, and all of the teachers at the elementary level. This is the first time in a long time that all six elementary schools at our mid-year I-Ready data had high growth and high achievement. And to bring all six schools together like that is really impressive work.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Christina Gavin, and I am the new, proud principal of Miriam. And I'm going to speak more to the culturally responsive teaching practices work at Miriam this year. For this school area, we have focused on deepening our working knowledge of culturally responsive teaching practices and building those practices into our regular teaching routines, our day-to-day instruction, and our lesson planning for students. And as many of us have spoken to tonight, there is an emphasis here on relationships. Relationships, we know that students do their best learning when they're in classrooms, where they are connected, where they feel that sense of belonging. And that sense of belonging is created when teachers know how to connect with their students. And the practices that we center much of our work from does come from Zaretta Hammond. And her work, Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain, has been, has been instrumental in bridging science, cognition, brain chemistry, what, what we know about how students learn, and bridging that with education and our pedagogy. Another focus area for us at Miriam has been to incorporate culturally responsive practices and take that lens and take that lens with our project-based learning and with our lesson planning. And so if we know that a complex topic is coming up in our curriculum, if we're going to be talking about hard history, or some topics that we might have students in our classrooms, we want to be considerate of different perspectives, different identities, we're being thoughtful and intentional about our approach. And so that is a practice that we have incorporated into our regular routines as we're planning and collaborating as educators. And we're seeing that students are, they're responding to the practices that we're putting in place, and we're seeing them take risks, we're seeing them persist in their learning, and lean into that productive struggle.
So we've reached the end, and this is kind of thinking about our next steps. The goals we'll be looking at is continued focus on our new literacy program that we have started this year, and supporting that Tier One instruction and culturally-responsive practices that is embedded in that program. Focusing on social-emotional learning through a district implementation of Second Step curriculum and the bullying prevention program, which is very exciting to be doing district-wide. And continued focus on MTSS, specifically making that tiered instruction piece and using student data to support positive student outcomes. And if we have permission, we said, thank you for listening, and any questions?
Thank you all very much. Slightly over 10 minutes, but... We'll have to compare you to the junior high and high school presentation in a couple...
Jim will be spot on.
Yes, Jim will be spot on. But, questions? Ben?
Thank you. Ms. Riley, at Conant, you spoke about the modified structure to the data team meetings along with improvements to the SEL modeling. Would you be able to provide an example of how this modified structuring improvements to the modeling have positively impacted the students there? You spoke a lot about the changes in modeling, but I would love to hear about, you know, how the students are doing as a result.
Sure. So the whole notion of MTSS is obviously Tier One instruction needs to be strong and meet all of our students. And then when we get together in the data meetings, we take a look at using results, whether it's DIBLs data or an end-of-unit assessment. Was there anybody who still needed a little bit more of a boost? And what we did was able to create a system. So just for example, the flex time, which is four times a week for 20 or 30 minutes, often the kids who need extra math also need extra ELA, right? That's not an uncommon thing. And one of the things I heard from the teachers when we started was, so what do we do? So do we just do one day math, one day reading? What do we do? Teachers were desperate to help students, but they weren't quite sure how to do it. And so one of the things, and this sounds simple, but it took us a few weeks to figure it out, is we put groups up there based on data, and we put the kids' names up there twice, knowing that they couldn't be in two places at once. But we bolded their names, and when we talked about the students in general, we always started with those kids. So the whole group was talking specifically about a child who needed both. We would refer to the classroom teacher and say, what do you think? Then the reading teacher might jump in, then the math specialist would jump in. We'd have a conversation about what was best for this child for the next six weeks. So they might say, you know what, he just took a math assessment, he seems to be understanding the concept, so let's put him in reading for the next six weeks. And then we codified away across seven teams so that we could all understand, you know, each other. When we went back in six weeks, we said, instead of saying, I think we did this, we knew exactly who we sort of put on the side for ELA, so that next time we had that discussion, we said, nope, we know that we need to take this child because we didn't last time. And so I think there was a more systematic way of students getting what they need in terms of the extra support. I hope that answered your question.
It did. Thank you very much.
Lots of new principals here. I think Ms. Nealon and Mr. Lab are the two veteran principals sitting here, right? Yes. I have a question. Do you, so the question is directed to you guys because you're veterans. Do you see a correlation between chronic absenteeism and the students' experience in school? Like, if a student has experienced school bullying, would that cause them to wanting to miss more school? If there is, what's the plan to support the families and students who are having these experiences? Thank you.
So that, school bullying is one of those things that can oftentimes lead to chronic absenteeism, and I'm sure you're all aware of like what chronic absenteeism is. Don't need to explain it, okay. I don't particularly, I'm only speaking specifically for Blanchard because I just recently looked at the data, but when we look at the students that it was at 135 days that had missed 13 days or more, I didn't, it did not correlate with students that I've necessarily engaged with in that particular sense. But what I would say is that there is definitely a correlation between students who are on the more dependent scale, because that's how we place students in Blanchard, is based on Zaretta Hammond and independent learning. So there's definitely a correlation there. There's a correlation with students who maybe need support in more than one area. And then there's the socioeconomic status of students too, that we can correlate with that. So there's a lot of factors that play into that. I would share too, that part of why we focused on restorative practices, and particularly the session around community-building circles and putting the connection before the content is for that, exactly that reason, and the focus of having everybody feel like they have a place to belong and a voice. And I think that is where that has to start, because, I mean, personally, for me, my worst fear is that someone's missing school because they're uncomfortable being there, based on an adult or a student making them feel that way. But I don't, at least at this moment in time, can't draw a line particularly to that of students missing school for that specific reason.
I would just add that as far as planning for students that are either on that chronically-absentee list, or who have expressed concerns around bullying, we have, I think at all of our schools, a team called the CARES team, which is comprised of our nurse, our mental health staff, the building-based administrators. And one of our regular agenda items for that team is to look at the chronic absentee list and check in with each other. Does anyone have a sense of why there's this level of absenteeism? And if we do, we have that person who has a connection, a relationship to the family be the one to reach out and say, hey, we're noticing an uptick in absences, is there anything we can support the family and the child with more? If we don't have a sense of why, we sort of pick one of us on that team to reach out to the family and ask why. And sometimes it's illness, sometimes it's travel. It gives us an opportunity to make that connection to the family, to understand and give them voice and opportunity to be able to say if there's something more we can do around concerns connected to school, or bullying, or anything happening in the building.
Just to add one piece to that, too, the Second Step, having that bullying prevention piece to that is really helpful too. And we did do that at all the schools. Like, we had teachers go through some of that. And I know that that's some of the work that Jen Faber's working on with the APs to have more of a broad, like, look at students chronically absent and how bullying plays into that as well. So it's great to be able to all, be able to speak the same language around that bullying prevention piece, too.
Bullying prevention also happens to be one of the items we're investing in a curriculum for next year, one of the few items that we're adding into our budget, I would add. Becca?
It's really fun to have everybody here to sort of talk about this work, because I think this really speaks to the budget process and how important it is that you all have the funding you need to enact these changes. Because as we know, education is very different today than it was 10 or 20 years ago. And something we've heard a lot about during this process is class sizes. I've heard, you know, all of you speak about small group work, and I was wondering if you could maybe speak a little bit more about how important it is to try to keep class sizes as small as possible, so that you can thread that needle of blending data and empathy and seeing children as individuals and get them exactly what they need.
I mean, I think it goes without saying that keeping class size down is something we'd all love to see, right? As you look at kids, if you look at, you know, and think back to our presentation, the common thread was relationships, relationships, relationships. And we're not going to make any progress in any headway with our students unless we're able to establish those meaningful relationships and foster and maintain those and leverage those for academic output and academic progress and academic achievement. And really, it's a lot easier to do that if you're working with 22, 23 students than even 25 or 26. Because when we talk about students, right, it's more than just a number, it's somebody in the room. You could have 22 students, but have one who takes up the majority of your time, or two. So I think it's imperative that we keep class sizes as small as possible.
Thank you for being here. This is, it's good to talk about, it's good to talk about education again. And thank you also for giving us a sense of how you're measuring progress, how you know when things are working and when, ooh, this protocol's not working for us, let's switch, let's go a different direction. That's helpful. Kind of building a bit on the theme of relationships, one that I know can be a struggle with respect to time and resources, is also recognizing you have a very diverse parent, caregiver, family group to work with as well. And I'm curious about what's, what's sort of the Tier One outreach to the families? What's the threshold for now we really need to dive into something? Because either through the data we're collecting or the stories we're hearing, we know that we need to foster a stronger relationship with this family to help support this student. What does that look like?
Something that comes to mind when you raise that question is the communication norms that we have as a part of our teams. We have a number of teams in our buildings. CARES team was one of the teams mentioned. Another team is the instructional support team. And one of the norms that we have in all of our buildings is if we have a student, and we are thinking that there is a student where we want to gather, we want to talk about that student academically, socially-emotionally, there might be something going on with the student, it could be attendance, it could be a concern about bullying, it could be any number of areas where we want to gather, we want to bring the team together. We're always reaching out to families, and that is a norm within our practices. And similarly, we are communicating with families when we're seeing success as well. We want to partner with families along the way, and we consider families to be our partners in this work.
Last question, anybody? Leela?
Thank you for presenting. Your slides look phenomenal, so thanks for that. I was curious about how, you were speaking about how PD is most helpful when there's kind of an implementation process and there's consistent feedback, how the restorative justices work, the restorative justice work is getting implemented or thought about kind of longer term beyond professional development. I'm super excited that it's happening, and just curious about how that kind of will be continued, ongoing.
A number of years ago, I went to a training to become a circle keeper, the same folks that came out to train our staff. And it can be pricey and time-consuming to do that. What was really helpful was when, after, when I initially went, I went with other folks, including the folks that are most intimately working with students, where a lot of issues can come up, particularly at recess. And so bringing an assistant, a general ed assistant, to be able to be part of that, and then opening up that professional learning to everybody in the community, not just the teachers, is really helpful. How we're going to sustain that is through making sure that it was actionable and something that people felt comfortable with and could get immediate feedback on, and then also shared resources that they could easily access. That way, they can train the new folks that come on how to conduct and run through a circle effectively. And so to be able to keep that momentum up and be able to share it with peers and share that between other buildings too, and those, you know, are all shared between buildings at this point, is really helpful in helping to maintain that and keep that consistent. And there's, again, a lot of carryover between restorative practices, responsive classroom, and the Castle Framework. So it's all, you know, a lot of this is in the water. But that's one example of something that we did at our school to meet the needs that we felt like that we needed to have. Just to go back to one of the last question that was asked was, school's very different for kids today than it was when we were children. And so, you know, we talk about homework, we talk about all the different things we're doing in school, all the ed you speak, but MTSS is one of those things where we need to educate the families on what, not only that acronym is, but what it really means and how that looks at the classroom level. And then also equally important is how we're responding to behavior in order to maintain relationships and help repair the harm that's been done. And restorative practices, restorative justice, which is they do at the secondary level, is a great way to help get a better understanding of that, and it's a language that can be used both at home and at school. So there's also the piece two around adult education, which I think we've all talked about from time to time, to order to maintain what we're doing at school. I hope that answered your question.
Thanks. Thanks for being here again. I have one question that I, it's kind of related to everything you're talking about, because I think one of the key pieces of the current elementary education puzzle is how we provide support across the scope of our students' needs. And a piece of that was mentioned by Larry in one of the previous answers, is how you navigate the differing needs of students within classrooms. So when one student does consume all the oxygen in the room, how are we supporting the other students in the classroom to be able to manage their reaction to it? One of the key pieces of what we've gone through over the last few years are a series of uncomfortable situations for all of us, from COVID lockdowns to schools being destroyed, to schools being built, to the budget and override. And I'm curious as to how all of this works, not just for the kids who are directly receiving the help, but for the kids around them who are impacted by all of this.
I'd be happy to talk a little bit about that. I think that the key component is what you do before you have the situation, and that is building the community in your classroom. Particularly at the elementary level, when you build a community in your classroom, you know that every child in there is going to get what they need, because you explicitly say that to folks, but you also say that doesn't necessarily mean everybody's getting the same thing. You model that yourself as a teacher, and you remind kids of that. We also have systems in place for opportunities for teachers to ask for support throughout the day in ways that look and are quite normalized, whether, you know, it's a walkie, whether, and it's not, help, help, I need help, you know, it's, we could use some assistance in the hallway here by room six, and then two people go. And we have a protocol that once two people have shown up, we don't have 10 people, we don't have 10 adults, we keep the two there. I think that we also owe it to answer kids' questions directly. And ultimately, it's our responsibility to let everybody in the room know that they're safe, that the teacher is there to take care of things, and that everybody is going to get what they need. That doesn't mean that it's easy, and that doesn't mean that it feels comfortable when it's happening or afterwards, but the building of that community is in the beginning, in the very beginning of the school year and continue it, is what will get you through. I was a fifth-grade teacher for 17 years. What I learned was every year I taught, I spent more time building community, because it never failed me. So it's a big component.
I'll just touch on something really quickly. I think it was great that we talked about proactively, and sometimes it does become a reactive situation. I had a situation recently where there was a child or a group of children in a particular classroom, you know, say constantly giving the teacher a challenging time, the other students. We had, I guess, what would be considered a restorative circle on resilience, on inclusiveness, on accepting others, and understanding that we all come from different places, that a student may or may not have a disability. And it's important that we know who's around us. And to Tricia's point, having those one-on-one conversations with the kids, whether it's an administrator, whether it's the classroom teacher, because at the end of the day, the teachers are really the first line of defense, they're at ground zero. And kids need to know that they can depend on their teachers.
We have one last question. So it was, it's a very insightful and prompting question. Thank you, Andrew. It was right at the end, and everybody wants to answer it, but Lakshmi, I think you had one last question?
No.
You're good? Okay. Thank you all. Thanks very much for coming, for presenting on something that's not about the budget, but still related to the budget. We appreciate that. Right there, at the last moment, with one that everybody wants to answer. All right, we're moving on to our ongoing business. All right, we're moving on to our ongoing business. Next item on the agenda is an update on our budget. I don't think we need to do much, Peter.
No, you know, I think it might be helpful to just clarify something. The, you know, we had been tasked with developing two budgets. One was the school committee's budget, which had been previously referred to as the A budget, but we had also developed a B budget in the event that the override did not pass because the school committee would have to revert to the level of funding that was available to the town of Acton and then proportionally move the budget forward that was responsive to that. So we had A and B budgets. When the override passes, the B budget no longer exists, right? That's really important to understand. There's actually only one budget proposal at this point that, that moves forward to the town meetings, and that's the budget that you voted. That's the A budget. You know, there was some discussion, I know some of our educators were saying, well, you know, what happens now with the B budget? And, and we've been really trying to clarify, it doesn't exist anymore. It's really the A budget. And obviously, the, the school committee budget has to go through the same town meeting approval process that it would in any other given year. So that's what we're working on. I just wanted to make sure we're really clear about that, that the B budget doesn't exist. I think that's probably the 10th time I've said it, which was intentional. You know, and we are moving forward with the school committee's budget at this point. So happy to answer questions on process, timing, anything like that, but there's, you know, where the override passed, there is no B budget to update you on, 11, for 11 members.
So, and, and I'll add to that, right? So there is, there is no B budget. Let me just say that a couple more times. We have a budget and our intention is to pass that budget at town meeting. There is an opportunity though, for either of the two town meetings to disapprove of our budget. And there's two ways they could do that. They could vote no, whole cloth on the budget, or they could vote to amend our budget. Voting to amend the budget is the same as voting down the budget, and it starts the same process for us, which is that if either town votes anything other than the assessment that we've given them, we need to come back and meet and we need to present another budget. It could be the same budget, probably not very responsive to our communities, it could be a slightly modified budget. At that point, the towns need to hold town meeting, a special or another town meeting to then try to vote that budget and pass that. And that, that occurs for both towns if the budget fails in either of the towns. If it fails in either of the towns again, we've talked about this, highly unlikely, then there will be another opportunity for us to revisit our budget. And then that will go to a joint town meeting of the two towns where a majority of the people present at that town meeting from both towns will vote on that budget. There is another eventuality, we don't need to talk about that. But again, there is no B budget, there is our budget now. The hope is, and the plan is, that that will pass. Remember to invite all your friends, family, voting members, anyone in, who's a resident, a voting resident of the town of Acton for May 6th, then town of Boxborough for May 13th, so that that budget passes at both of those. There's no override anymore, the override has passed, so the Acton levy limit has been raised by $6.2 million. And then how those budgets get voted at Acton Town Meeting will actually relate to how much of that additional levy limit is used. Currently, 5.4 million of that has been budgeted between ours and the town budget.
And can I just clarify?
Please.
One thing. So, you know, sometimes there's been some questions around like, could someone amend a budget? Whether or not someone amended a budget by, you know, $6 million, a dollar, or 50 cents, it doesn't matter, it's the same outcome, which it means that it was just disapproved, which kicks it back to the school committee to then determine what to do next with it, and then return to the towns with a proposal. But the, the way town meeting works, the town meeting can't actually pick a budget number for the district, only the regional school committee can. And that, but it is up to the town meeting to decide whether or not to appropriate the funds for that. So they can certainly amend it, but it's the same as just not approving it.
Becca, question?
I, I saw that there was a question amongst, you know, community members of exactly how that process would work. If we had to revisit the budget and then do another town meeting, would it be possible to do a joint town meeting, or are we talking two separate town meetings again? And the expense that comes with that?
Yeah. So, you know, the, the, the process is very prescribed legally. If it was rejected at either one of the two town meetings the first time, the town, the school committee reconsideres that and you have 30 days to reconsider, and then you resubmit your budget to both towns. They then have 45 days in which to hold a town meeting. And so, you know, only the town that didn't approve the budget needs to hold that town meeting. If both towns didn't, then obviously both towns would hold a town meeting. That has to take place on the town side. The next time that happens, at that point, it's a district meeting where the school committee is actually the host of the, the quote, "town" meeting, and its residents from both communities come together at the district to discuss and vote on the district budget.
Thank you. Other questions, comments on this process? Andrew?
I promise a much shorter response room. If an amendment is proposed but not passed, it doesn't trigger anything.
Yes. We've, so we've been, we've been here before, several years ago, where amendments were made at both town meetings by community members and those amendments did not pass, right? So anybody can make an amendment on a, on a article at town meeting. And then the town meeting votes on whether or not to approve or disapprove of that amendment. So it is quite possible that people may make amendments to, or may make proposals to amend our budget, and that will work through the town meeting process, the moderators will manage that. Should the amendments pass, then as we said, that is a no. But it also gives us some information around where the town is leaning in terms of how much they are looking to reduce our budget. Not that we necessarily have to take that, but it's good information to go. If someone says, I want to take $6 million out of your budget, we're probably not going to come back with a $6 million reduced budget. But if someone says, I want to take a million out, we might look at how we do that. And recognizing that what they're amending is their assessment number and not our overall budget, and we're responsible for that top line of our budget, and then how it flows down to the two assessments. Lakshmi?
Can the meeting go beyond the sixth?
Yes. Town meetings are scheduled for two, three, four days. The budgets are scheduled on the first day of both of the two towns, town meetings, with the hopes that we get to the budget vote for our school budget before 9:30 when the babysitting ends, so that those families can come and vote. But it, the, there's already plans in both towns for at least a second day of town meeting. Moving on, end of year district goals update. Peter?
All right. So this, this actually isn't really, it's the, the separate district goals update. We actually just came to you, like about a month and a half ago, and did a longer district goals update. But what this is an opportunity to do is just let you know that the district goals end of the year update is in your packet. You know, there isn't a significant status change on most of those items because as you had seen a few weeks ago, a lot of them are already completed or were well on their way to being completed. We tried to link some selected pieces of evidence for you that we thought you might be interested in seeing, of some of the great work of our educators and leaders across the district, just to be able to get a little flavor of, of what we've been working on all year. We also, if we've already done a presentation on one of the big three goals, we included that as a link so that you could refresh your memory there around that goal. And just as a note, you know, because of all the budget discussions and how long some of the meetings had been going, or just around budget, we had postponed goal number two, which is kind of the, the work really that's going to focus on the MTSS process. That actually is coming back next meeting on May 16th. Deb and her team are going to come and just talk you through what kind of a data cycle looks like, so you can go a little bit deeper in understanding how the MTSS process actually plays out and what our educators are doing with data now as a, as a deeper dive. So we do have a little bit more information coming your way. You know, in terms of, you know, my own goals, I think I had updated you before, you know, really wanted to focus on this idea of developing a high performing leadership team. We have a good number of leaders, and I think it's actually 11 of our core leaders at the district and school level are new within the last three years. And so that means that we have to do a lot of work making sure that we've built trust among the teammates that have to work together, that we have effective decision-making processes in place so that we can be efficient and effective in the decision-making that we have to make, and that we have a good system of accountability built within the team to each other in the work that we do. Wanted to do a lot of work on that this year, but we ended up spending, you know, probably better part of two thirds of the year just on managing the current budget and then trying to move that forward. So, you know, that is work that will continue into next year. We've already talked about that with the team, and I think the team recognizes that that's going to be an ongoing effort for us to continue that work. And as you know, we're welcoming a new assistant superintendent into the team next year. So there's going to have to be that opportunity to kind of recalibrate and reset and, and welcome someone new into the team. The other goal I had was around communication. It feels like about six years ago that we actually were just talking about bringing in Parent Square, but the people on the staff side that have used Parent Square have found it, you know, much easier to use than the previous system in Bright Arrow that we had, which was, you know, about 12 clicks to do something that most people could do in one somewhere else. So we've been able to put in a more efficient system. It actually saved us some money to move in that direction. We've heard from our multilingual families that the translations have been good and that they feel like they're getting the information in the languages that they need the first time and not having to, you know, kind of fight with the system. Of particular note, like when we do a snow day call now, you know, I don't use my own voice because if I have the system do a robocall, it actually automatically translates the robocall into the user's primary language when they pick up the phone. So just a more accessible platform. You know, we certainly want to grow that, and over time, what we want to do is start to, you know, invite more of our educators in the district to start using that platform for more of the day-to-day communications with families. But the goal this year was really to focus on the administrative team and kind of the front office use of that, just to, you know, make sure it was the right platform for us, which I think it is, and we're going to continue using it. I also foresee, you know, if, if it had been any other year, we would probably be migrating our website over to Parent Square as well. We weren't able to do that for this year, so probably what we'll do is we'll spend part of next year migrating over to Parent Square, and that actually will unify the communications. So if we send a news post home, we can also have it post automatically to a website, and that just makes everything a little bit easier, and it will push it out to social media for us too. So just, again, less work, more efficient work, and a better communication package for families. Did a lot of work early in the year around trying to streamline my own communication with families. I found a great tool called Writing for Busy Readers, which is a great little AI tool that really helps you get right to the point of what you're trying to say with the notion that people don't have time to read and listen to extra clauses and flowery language and everything else all the time. Adam was the victim of it yesterday as we were talking through the town meeting budget presentation. I think I kept saying, why is that extra clause in there? We don't need that clause. You know, but, but really just thinking about how we communicate in the language we use, make sure it's easy to access for parents from a linguistic standpoint. Did a lot of that. You know, I, I didn't think that the communicating around the budget was going to take up most of the year, but I tried to take some of the things I was thinking about around my own communication work this year and translate into how we work through the budget. We were a bit limited in terms of outreach to families because of, you know, campaign finance laws, we had to put everything on one central place and couldn't send things out directly to people, but I really tried to work developing out that FY25 budget website, use a variety of resources, some print, some video, you know, and just kind of reach families where they are. I also found, rather than putting a bunch of PDFs on the website, I tried to actually put the language of what I was saying right on the website because when people access the website, it's automatically done in the language that they need it. So really trying to think about how multilingual families and multilingual community members access the information we have in what we do. So I offered that up and, you know, I did a goals reflection to you, that'll be posted on the website after the meeting, but I tried to offer some just ideas about, okay, what was the work on goals I did, but then also what are the other things that we ended up spending time on that you might want to comment on as you evaluate me? Quite honestly, I feel like about all I've done this year is talk about healthcare and talk about, you know, the FY24 budget and what we're trying to do to manage it, and then what we're going to do for the FY25 budget and how we're going to manage that. I will say, you know, one of the things I heard, we, you know, we send out feedback forms to educators and, you know, I heard in my feedback, obviously a lot of frustration about the budget situation we're in, and that, that's certainly expected. I think another area of feedback was from educators for me was, you know, around kind of course leveling at the high school, that not every educator at the high school was really on board with that. And quite honestly, maybe some frustration that I hadn't voiced, that not every educator was on board with it. And I recognize that change is a challenging process and, you know, that's, that's fair, I understand that. And then educators just wanted to see me more in classrooms, in schools. I feel like I don't spend enough time in schools, it's probably because I'm still a recovering principal, but I was able to visit over 150 classrooms over the course of the year, see some different projects. I got to see, you know, four different examples over the last month or so of, you know, the, the new core literacy program and kind of the final performance assessment students were doing. So I got a sampling of, you know, how different schools had approached that, and that was exciting. And, you know, certainly every year I try to find ways to spend more time in schools and classrooms, but that, you know, things can also come up in the, the life of a superintendent that can hinder that. But that's kind of an overview of, of, of my year. I'm happy to answer questions, but I think Adam's going to talk a little bit about what the superintendent evaluation process looks like now, and then we can come back for, for more.
Yeah. Thank you, Peter. So I want to recognize that there are five new committee members here this year. I don't know, you know, you guys probably don't feel like you're new members anymore after the gauntlet we've put you through. But this is, this is a, definitely a challenging process and challenging part of the responsibilities of a school committee member that I just want to spend some time to review with everybody. And it's challenging the first time you do it and the seventh time you do it, but it is also one of the most important things that we do, right? Policy, budget, superintendent evaluation, the big three of responsibility of the school committee. So I do want to spend some time. As Peter mentioned, he's written you a memo, he's provided you with some very detailed information in terms of his progress towards the goals for this year. And we have a rubric and a, an evaluation template by which we evaluate Peter. And so I want to go through some of the highlights of that, that tool because it can feel a bit daunting, but also can serve to provide you with some structure about how you go about evaluating the superintendent. So there's the, the first step. So as Peter mentioned, Julie did email out to everybody the memo, the, the information, this template, it will go as posted as part of our packet as well. For me, the, the overarching principle is if you rate Peter anything other than proficient in any category, please include text to explain why you rated Peter something other than proficient. Peter is whispering my ear that that is required, and I'm emphasizing it because there are many times where I have received, and I will just point out that this will be the third year in a row where I am deeply participating in the superintendent evaluation. I see you smirking back there.
It's required.
This is, this, this is not about me, this is about Peter, but what I need as someone who is creating a summative, a summary of Peter's evaluation, it is about me. I need, I need content. I need you to tell me, I believe that Peter is exemplary in this area for these reasons as evidenced by these things that he did, that he has provided you the data on. Super, super important that in the comments, if you rate Peter on anything other than proficient, that you explain that with some reference to something that we've seen in all of our meetings this year, or in the wealth of documentation that Peter has just provided us as to why you have chosen to rate him something other than proficient. If I ask for nothing else from everybody, well, there's, that's one. The other thing is, please, 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 May 24th is the date by which I need these evaluations. May 24th, please complete the evaluation by that date, and then you need to email it to both me and Julie LaLumiere so that we have those documents because again, I need to then collect all of that information, collate it, and create a summary and write up a very nice thing that I awkwardly read at the meeting in front of Peter and in front of everybody, even though we've all read it already, but I have to read it into the record. So, May 24th. I also want to take this opportunity to call out to the members of the public who are not just in this room, but also watching online. Please feel free to send any feedback that you have around the superintendent and his evaluation and his performance to me and Julie LaLumiere, and I will include that as part of the evaluation for the superintendent. Please feel free to share that information with anybody. May 24th would also be the deadline for any members of the public who wish to submit some feedback on the superintendent. Other than that, Peter has done an excellent job of indicating which focus indicators are being addressed by each of the different district goals and professional practice goals. As you read through this, there's a lot of great information that will help you with this evaluation. I am happy to make myself available to anybody, new or veteran on the committee, for some assistance in how to go about filling this out. It can feel fairly daunting. I know that in my first few years, I put it off to the last minute because I was like, oh my gosh, this is so hard. There's so much to do here. Just start by checking off some boxes. That's a really good way to start. But if you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to individually talk with you about the process. I'm not necessarily going to, you know, influence your evaluation of the superintendent, but it can feel daunting. And so I want to make myself available for that. So two big questions, two big asks of the committee. One, anything other than proficient, please provide some commentary with pointed data as to why you're rating Peter other than proficient. And secondly, May 24th is the deadline by which to send these in to me. Like I said, I've got to collate it all and I'll be doing so on planes traveling around the world. So it's a lot easier if I have all of that information right up front and don't have to email and harass people for it.
Can I add one thing to that?
Please.
You know, two, two suggestions I have. One is just on a personal note. Comments are much more useful than checkboxes. Right? Checkboxes are, are nice to categorize and it's because it gets reported to the state. But the comments are actually what are helpful in terms of me thinking about how I want to grow. You know, I've had an opportunity over my career to now evaluate hundreds of people on an annual basis. So I think, you know, a couple of things I've learned is I go through that eval process. One is before I start going through the weeds of the documentation, I actually try and think about, you know, what, what is the feedback I would want to give this person to say, okay, here, here's where things are going well. And what does my gut tell me things are going well on? And here's maybe why. But then also what does my gut tell me like if this person improved this, it would have a deeper impact? And so that usually is a good starting point. And then you go through some of the other data and the evidence. It's not that you're dismissing that. But I, I do think in all of the DESI work to try and make this quantifiable, it, it's easy to, you know, get lost in the weeds and not think about from your own perspective, what's going well and what would I like to see growth on? And that's really where the eval process should kick in for educators. So I would just maybe give that suggestion from my own experience that it's a nicer starting point where it doesn't feel as overwhelming. And then you can go through the data and the goals and, and make some, you know, pointed comments in there. But I, I've just always found like if I start there, it makes it awfully hard to be successful. And then at the end, after I've gone through the details, then I come back out to the, the 20,000 foot level, take a look at again and say, all right, so of all of the comments and feedback I've given, is this actually how I feel about that person's performance? Because again, you start getting into the weeds, then you have to kind of zoom back out and, and make sure you're checking your thinking around that. And that usually is a, is an easier way to get into these evaluations rather than just being overwhelmed. Cause there's a lot of information in these DESI forms.
Question.
I have a question. So do we meet with the superintendent one-on-one after the evaluation process or not at all?
Not typically, no.
Okay.
But, you know, one practice that I do is that over the summer, I actually reach out to all committee members. And I do invite one-on-one conversations. And typically what I do is the start of the conversation is what from the evaluation do we want to talk about on an individual basis that might be left over from last year? And then the second half of the conversation is, all right, now let's talk about next year. What are your hopes for next year? What do you want to make sure that the committee's hitting on next year so that as I'm talking about the agenda with the chair, we can make sure we capture those things?
Other questions? No. Okay. Thank you all. Next item on our agenda, school committee communication goal update. So I will, I will start by sharing some communications that I've received from residents and voters. And it somewhat echoes what Amanda said to us earlier. We did not get an overwhelming win at the override. And I think it is just absolutely crucial that we all show up at both town meetings to make sure that the community see that we are here and we're respectful of their time and their funding. And that's, that's both town meetings. So I expect all of the Boxborough members to be in attendance at the Acton Town Meeting. And I expect all of the Acton Town Members to be in attendance and experience a Boxborough Town Meeting. I, I was relating this back to my own professional life and I can't imagine sending an email to my boss, asking him for $14 million and not actually showing up in person to, to make that ask. And that's what we're doing to the members of our two communities. So I implore each and every one of you who are here tonight and those of you who are unable to make it this evening, please, please, please show up to the town meetings. It's super, super important that the community see that we value and respect the community and the investment that they're making in our schools, particularly now that we know inside the town of Acton, there is not unanimous support for the money that we're asking for. So I think it's, it's even more crucial that, that we show up and we make sure that we're there. And I'm saying that personally, but I'm also saying that as feedback that I've gotten from individual community members who are saying, who have said to me, you guys just made it by the skin of your teeth. You better show up and make sure that you are working for these funds that you want. So that's my, my community communication goal update. Other folks have updates from folks who they've been speaking to out in the community. Yan Chen.
I have actually extended the reservation at the town hall. So the school committee office hour is going to continue. It's very interesting because after about a month and a half of sitting there by myself and sometimes guilt a few people in, guilt trip a few people in, I finally started having parents and community members stopping by. So it, it did take a while, but they are coming. So I'm going to continue to do that. Just, I'm not here during the weekends because I have to coach. So sorry about that.
Yan Chen, could you tell us what day and what time?
Yes, it's still every Friday from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And I'm at Acton Town Hall, Room 126. Thank you.
Other communication goal updates?
So last Saturday, Peter and I and Adam and also David Martin from the Select Board had a coffee with different members of the public at KJ's Cafe in Acton. And it was a really interesting discussion. I always like to hear what people have to bring to the table because it really showcases sort of the, the broad range of opinions and questions people have. And I'm still struck by how a lot of people just have questions on process and how, you know, the sausage is made. So, you know, I, I know that we've had this goal ongoing to be more transparent and more connective and be available to people. And, you know, it just sort of highlights again that this work very much is ongoing. And I appreciate Yan Chen's work to sort of be available. And I hope that, you know, we can all make that effort, you know, ongoing. Because even after this override vote, even after the town meeting, we've, you know, need to be connecting and available and answering questions.
Ask me then, Tori.
So for the Tuesday, next Tuesday, Monday, Monday. I think that what Rebecca, reflecting what Rebecca said, it is the process questions a lot of people. In fact, it's not question, it's a gap, right? They don't have that idea that they're missing that information. So what I found is a lot of people are, don't think they have to show up on that day because they already voted. So I think we don't have time for everybody to show up at a Yan Chen's town meetings because this is probably, we don't have that luxury, right? So wondering if there's any communication method we want to utilize to get that out.
Tori's nodding her head feverishly, so I'm just gonna...
You just queued up what I wanted to say so beautifully. That, that was awesome. That, that was, yes. So where I'm going with this is every conversation matters. These in-person conversations really matter. And something else we can do that's effective is sending people an email with the links on where they get these answers to the questions. So the district's budget website, we've all hopefully had those in our signature blocks. I sent that out. I sent a link to the override forum. And a couple of other things and sent everybody just to, hey, here's a couple of sentences on the situation. Here's some more resources if you want to know more. And I had a couple of, of people come back to me afterwards and say, what you sent out made the difference. That helped me make up my mind. So even, you know, if you're in a position where you're camping all weekend at Camp Acton, come to Camp Acton, let's talk about the budget. If you can't do that, we can all certainly send out emails. We can send out links. We can send out that information about the process and we can get people out. This is important.
Just wanted to say that there was a dance party on Saturday with folks from the shelter. Super amount of effort from Acton Boxbury United Way, also Jen Faber at the school district and folks in the community. The space was donated. There was someone from a local faith community who used his passenger van and got quarried on Friday last minute. That was pretty incredible. So just love to see that. Also throughout this process of this override, we have knocked on over a thousand doors in conjunction with teachers, with parents, with high school students. And it was also fun to see folks that I had talked to at the Sergeant Memorial Library in our office hours then show up at the polls to vote. To Tori's point, I have an email template if anybody's curious, happy to share that with you. And if you want to get involved this weekend, there's plenty going on. So also let me know.
Thank you. Anyone else with updates? Okay. Moving on to the general funds and long-term funds, investment policy, second read and a vote. Peter, do you want to give us a brief intro? And I noticed that Gary had to leave, so it's really just a reminder for the committee. I did send Gary the PDF file directly to his Boxborough email address.
Yep. So, you know, just this, we actually had brought this back to you probably six meetings ago for a first read. We did not receive feedback on it. This was a policy that was actually written by the auditors essentially in order to bring us into compliance standards with audit reports. It was just a comment that we had received in the audit report. We're putting the policy in place just to make sure that, you know, the financial procedures are compliant and we move forward. It was not the result of any concerns other than we just didn't have this type of a policy. This is not a financial plan. Want to be really clear about it. It's not a short-term plan. It's not a long-term plan. It's just a policy governing the investment of funds, saying they're done by generally accepted auditing principles. So that's really the goal of it.
Great, thank you. So if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the policy as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we'll go with Lila and then Tori. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous, thank you. All right, we're moving on to subcommittee and member reports. First one on our list here is Policy Sub. Anybody who was a member of Policy Sub who was in attendance on the 11th, want to give us an update? Or we can defer until Liz is back? Looking at the blank, no, you got something?
An agenda might not have been posted, so we didn't meet. But I had an informational conversation with our energy manager and we are moving towards getting something collated around our use of energy and decarbonization and all of that kind of stuff.
The resource force will be happy to hear that.
We also sent them an email just being like, hey, we've been talking. Here is the process we're thinking of following, just kind of to let them know that we were listening and that they can follow along the process.
Great. ALG update from April 22nd? Didn't have a meeting or no update? No meeting? Great. We're on a roll here. Health Insurance Trust from April 25th.
Like this meeting and real life, Health Insurance Trust will take up some time. Health Insurance Trust met on April 25th, reviewed treasurer's report, Gallagher our consultants' report, progress on contracts and an update on the legal steps to dissolve the trusts. All of our accounts, with the exception of our main account, have been closed. Currently, we've got about 2.5 million on hand. This was current as of April 25th. Approximately $600,000 is owed to the trust from reimbursement. Another $340,000 is incoming shortly. Liabilities as of May 1st, we're going to be around 2.8 million. After all payments coming into the trust, we should have a remainder of approximately $250,000 in cash. This does not reflect continued reimbursement nor quarterly rebates that accrue through our insurance organizations. After July 1st, HIT will continue to accrue pharma credits, but as of June 30th, we may be liable for around 1.5 million prior to reinsurance, rebates, et cetera, that may offset that amount. Year over year, we're approximately 22% higher than last year. As the HIT continues to run out over a term of time, some existing contracts need to be amended. Abacus is an example agreed to terminate that contract with us as of June 30th. The treasurer and our consultants will be retained on a time limited basis with limited time and expense costs. The active trust was dissolved. One of the two parties that made up the trust, the district, us, voted to, in a previous meeting, to exit the trust. An ongoing non-active trust will continue to operate to pay out any runout based on the agreements of the town and the district. All documents, including the treasurer document, are available on the HIT doc you share, available via the HIT Town of Acton website. Our next meeting will be May 23rd at 8:15 here in the ABRSD admin building.
Thank you, Andrew. Finally, we have a building project update. Peter.
So, you know, building project is in the very closeout stages of this, but probably the biggest piece of work that's been going on around the building project has been trying to move the battery array forward with the solar panels. And that's obviously been going on for, you know, quite some time. And we've been working through, you know, Board of Health approval processes and making sure that, you know, everything's ready to go. You know, we continue to hear, you know, a lot of resident concerns in the area. We've heard concerns from some of the Board of Health members. We've heard some concerns from the fire chief around that. And, you know, in, in listening to that feedback, what I actually want to do, we've gotten to a point where we don't need to rush into a summer 25 construction window because it's just too tight to make that. So I actually think there's an opportunity to pause us right now on that project. And we're going to use the summer to, in the spring, to go back to some of the fire chief's concerns, see if those can be resolved, see what other concerns have come from residents or Board of Health, look for ways to resolve those concerns. We also want to do some financial modeling because we, as we got into kind of the new updated pricing based on how the solar canopies had to be constructed, the financial return diminished over time. And so we had gone from essentially what was a four cent per kilowatt hour PPA to an eight cent per kilowatt hour, now up to a 13 to 14 cent per kilowatt hour PPA. And with a 30-year commitment, it starts to actually border on whether or not that's the right decision. So, you know, we want to make sure that anything we do is obviously a safe project. We commissioned an independent consultant who actually is a national leader in energy response for battery fires that can take place. We had them review the project and all of Nexamp's work. They came back to us and said, nope, we believe this project can be built. It's safe. You've taken all the right precautions. They've offered Nexamp a couple of pieces of feedback and Nexamp was willing to put those into place. But I don't think we've fully resolved some concerns in the community. So we're just going to slow down right now, take the summer, reevaluate it and rethink it from a safety perspective, rethink it from a financial perspective and then come back in the fall and have more of an opportunity to talk about what are we doing with this project? So just wanted to give that update that we're going to slow down, pause and, and think deeply about it.
Ben?
Real quick question. I can't recall if we were going to utilize the IRA tax credit to offset some of the costs with the battery storage system. And if we are, I know that tax credit goes away, I believe in the fall or, or winter. Has that been taken into account?
You know, I, I want to make sure that the decisions we make around this are safety first. And then we make financial decisions as, you know, secondary to that. With that said, yeah, there's a lot of financial considerations in pausing the project or choosing not to proceed that I think what we need to do is just put all of that in one place and be really clear about our decision-making. But the, the decision tree that I've put in place with Nexamp right now is such that first step is we're going to resolve any safety concerns. If we resolve the safety concerns, we're going to do a really thorough financial analysis of all of this to then be able to make sure that we have the right choices there. And then we'll make a decision about what the project's going to do following. You know, some of the backup plans could be solar panels only on the roof. What we know is we cannot build the number of solar panels to make this a net zero building without a battery storage system. In Massachusetts, anything over 500 kilowatt hours has to have a battery attached to it or it can't be constructed. So, you know, if we choose not to proceed with the battery, that means that we have essentially said, no, we're, we're not going to have a net zero building from an energy standpoint. The building is still performing remarkably well and solar panels on the roof only, quite honestly, because of the cost of construction of the, the parking lot, might actually be a more prudent financial decision just to do the solar panels on the roof than even trying to do the battery and, and the parking. But that, that, we really need to dig into that. And in order to do it, requires a pretty in-depth financial... in-depth financial analysis with people with levels of expertise in solar and battery storage that well exceed what we have internally. You know, Nexamp actually has offered to cover the costs of that, even though it's our own independent consultant. So, you know, we're really just making sure we follow all the leads and doing this the right way is the goal here. Sorry for the long answer.
But I will add that there are literally hundreds of thousands of dollars already buried in the ground because of this project. There was ledge that was blasted away, there were caissons that were dug, there's a lot of money that's already sunk. So, the financial model is something that we're looking at, but again, outside of the finances of this, I think the, while the safety is paramount, the other thing to consider is that when we brought this project to both communities, we sold it as a triple net-zero building, and we are very close to losing that ability to have a triple net-zero building because of safety concerns, and I won't qualify those concerns, but I will just say that, you know, we're putting a pause on this now. We are going to revisit it, it's not done yet, but I think anyone who is concerned about energy reliance, sustainability, the environment, it's time to start coming out and speaking in favor of this, if you believe that that's an important component of both our schools and our community, because, like I said, we're at risk of not having a net-zero energy building, and not because we didn't build the building right. Another comment, Ben?
Real quick, I promise. One of the concerns I have moving forward is that with the fragility of the grid right now, they're talking about for next year, if we have another Arctic vortex, we will start to have rolling blackouts, so that battery system also backs up as an energy system. Something to take into consideration, I know. Where I work right now, we're looking at battery backup systems, we're looking at fuel cells, we're looking at all sorts of creative and innovative ways to harden our system, because with electrification means more load, and more load means, you know, we need to generate more energy and store more energy during the day, so.
Yep. All right, any other last comments or questions on the building project, solar and battery array? Okay. We're at the home stretch. We're on to our consent agenda. As a reminder, items on the consent agenda don't usually require discussion and are approved with one vote, unless a member would like to hold an item, and if you would, you just simply say hold. I will read through each of these items, and as a reminder, you don't need to have been present at a meeting to vote on the minutes. Item one is approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of April 4th, 2024. Item two is the ABR PTSO donation of $5,500 to RJ Gray for the 7th and 8th grade year and, grade end-of-year field trips. Item three is a donation of $4,029.90 from ABRHS Speech and Debate Coach Stipends to the ABRHS Speech and Debate Club account. Item four is a donation of $1,000 to the senior high school STEM program. Item five, a donation of $1,000 to the high school science team from Crystal Pharmatech. Item six is a donation of $1,000 to the high school science team from Alny, I can't say this one, Alnylam Pharmaceuticals, thank you. Item seven, a donation of $2,758.71 to Miriam Elementary from, for supplies from the Miriam Elementary PTO. And item eight is a donation of $1,000 to the ABRHS from the PTSO for the prom bus expense.
So moved.
Second.
So, given that no items were held, was there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Ben moved, and Tori seconded. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is unanimous, thank you. Statement of warrants and recommendation to approve?
I move that the school committee vote to approve the below-listed warrants totaling AP vendor warrants as follows, 24-020B dated 4/4/2024, in the amount of $355,374.32. 24-021A dated 4/11/2024, in the amount of $160,739.60. 24-021B dated 4/18/2024, in the amount of $466,028.18. 24-022A dated 4/25/2024, in the amount of $1,881,104.90. Payroll vendor warrants as follows, 24-020PR dated 4/4/2024, in the amount of $587,492.40. 24-021PR dated 4/18/2024, in the amount of $1,248,328.53. Payroll warrants as follows, P2420 dated 4/4/2024, in the amount of $2,971,777.11. P2421 dated 4/18/2024, in the amount of $3,074,569.32. And student activities warrant as follows, 24-022JH dated 4/25/2024, in the amount of $13,282.
Second.
Tori got that second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Also unanimous, thank you very much. Peter, any last items to notify the committee about?
So, there was a book?
Microphone.
There was a book at your seat when you came in. It's by an author Nate Levinson, who was a former superintendent, but he was also a school board member up in Boxford. He has his own consulting business now, he's very, very skilled at what he does, and one of his areas of specialization is making really good decisions with valuable resources from taxpayers. And so, you know, he's going to come in actually right at the end of school and do a workshop for school committee, based on some of the information in this book. The idea isn't that you necessarily try and do everything, but the idea is to consider some alternate points of view about what might be priorities in spending, and how to make sure that we're spending money wisely with the resources that are given to us from the community. So, you know, I'm sure he will insert some cognitive dissonance into our thinking, and that's the idea, is to have to grapple with some ideas about how we approach future budgets. But we thought it was appropriate to actually think of kicking off next year's budget process at the end of this year, and really, really get rolling. I know, I know it sounds exciting, but that is the plan that we have. We also invited some members from our leadership team to join us as well, so that we can actually do some learning together.
Thank you. I will just highlight that we do have a meeting posted for Monday, the 6th, in the high school, Room 136, should we need it. We may or may not, so please just keep an eye on your emails, particularly Sunday night into Monday morning. If we need that meeting, it is an opportunity where we can meet as a quorum prior to town meetings, should we need to talk about anything that we think might be coming up in town meetings. So, that's on the agenda, on your agendas, Monday, May 6th, 6:00 p.m., Room 136 in the high school, if we need it. With that, Ginny, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Seconded. Ben seconded. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you all, have a good evening.